Jimmy, that's the auditor's office, how, how, can you give us an update on where we are on that?
They finished up Friday with Auto-Electrical only. They'll be here this week with the rest of the sitting files in. And we start working on the floor. Uh, the seventh, the doors came in, so they haven't gotten the kind of the warehouse, but then they made the switch all yet. But once they do that, then I'm gonna say within the next two weeks we may be ready.
Two weeks, that's exciting.
We're ready.
Are you ready?
We don't care if we have doors in mind.
Can we still instead of desk, keep the TV trays and tell her working on it?
I'm really ready.
All right, um, this is information only, also, um, the Burgess Equipment Auction is May tenth.
So I need to know if you have any equipment you know of, so I can list it in paper and we can run that for two weeks. So a couple of weeks before at least, I might put three weeks before.
Okay, I must put the trucks in there and just get your help, whatever that is.
I thought you did that last night.
I was going to, but we never got time because of the weather.
All right, let's move to item number seven, which is to consider the extension agents' February report request for reimbursement. Ms. Penny Baron, two hundred dollars and thirty cents. Ms. Savannah Williams, one thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents. We have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell, we have a second. Second from Commissioner Shutt, any discussion on this item?
Uh, the, uh, meals, are they
Yeah.
left into the same that we are supplied, her meal?
I, you know, we do sixty dollars a day, so it depends on who eats their meals or eating, but I, yeah, she doesn't turn in the seeds when it's like, so we're doing the daily.
Are those, uh, do they, uh, purchase meals for some of the participants, the?
Should be on here because they also have the four inch checkbook and all that should come out there, so these should just be their own. Unless it says, and I didn't see that it said anything about that, this should just be their own.
Does she still book and stuff in advance like she would?
She does the hotel, we do pay the hotel and everything else we don't. But this should be pretty, it meant it was pretty big, but I know she had a lot of.
Could you ask her how that works and just that way let us know maybe at the next Commissioners Court meeting, kind of what that, what the, how, how that's structured? All right, we have a motion to accept both reports. Did we do that?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. All right, let's move to item number eight, discuss the February activity report of the jail and sheriff's office. Let's do the jail first, just so we're all looking at the same thing. Do we have any Bell County inmates in our jail today? Bell County's got.
We're billing for one from February and we are caught up on them for all payments, I got it back Friday.
That's good news.
Everything except what I'm sending out today, which is February's bill, because it was just one inmate.
Who, who had the contact that helped us get that fixed, Jimmy? Thank you, appreciate that. All right, so, do we know, is there a plan to replace the Bell County inmates with some other place? I will throw out that a commissioner from Dallas County told me that we could pick and choose whatever we wanted. And they would, they would be a high dollar, high dollar, we could. Uh, yeah, we may, we may, we may regret it in the type of people we get, but, um, yeah, that's, that's gonna be a big loss, losing the Bell County employees. It's gonna be a big financial loss.
They're, they're in front of the re- well, sixty people by itself.
Who's?
Bell County. I think this deal they built is, did you take a hundred, sixty hundred?
We have any jail questions? If not, let's move to the sheriff's office report. Call to.
Tell the drug arrest and put them on the K nine as well.
That's good. Eight deployments. That's up, isn't it? That's up considerably.
Civil process is down quite a bit.
I've been waiting for a divorce.
That may be good news. This one's broken if that county's helping the county or revenue for the, for the part. They, they don't go the same direction. It's interesting though that you had eight dog, um, deployments, but the, but the drugs family was down this month. I mean, that's, you normally would think it would go the other way.
You gotta look at something.
Yeah. Any questions for leave? All right, thanks, appreciate it. Okay, this is item number nine, discussing, discuss and consider the approval of a certain agreement by and between Young County, Young County Commissioners Court, the City of Graham, and Lake Country Catering LLC. This is related to provisions for the sale of certain alcoholic beverages during events at the Young County Arena, Arena. Appreciate you coming here to explain this, explain this to us.
Thank you, Judge, for the opportunity to bring this to court today. I do, before I begin talking about the reason, I do need to advise you on a not well-known provision of Texas law and government code. Yesterday was my birthday and there's a provision in the code that says if you appear before Commissioners Court on the next business day after your birthday, the Commissioners have to be nice to you.
There we go.
Get him on.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. So this is an agreement that has been before you before when we first started, but you remember we went through a big, uh, reorganization. One of the things that we did was we separated out the alcohol sales from the commissionaire contract, but another thing that we put in place. Arena Board's had an opportunity to review this, city's had an opportunity to review this. We're doing really good, we think, with Lake Country Catering, and what we're doing, we're putting this on a one-year renewal, so if anything kind of goes sideways for us, we can always go to a new one in the following year. But this is just a renewal of that contract. Some of the highlights are that the vendor will not provide the sale of alcohol areas due to specific events, must remove any visible alcohol signage related promotional bits material being visible to the public. That was in the original contract. There's really no changes to it, and I always get asked in paragraph eleven, for the contract period, vendor will pay the city or the designated twenty percent of gross alcohol sales sold. That is the, uh, that is the surcharge that we pay for the, the franchise needed, we required of alcohol sales.
Was it twenty percent last time?
It was, yes.
And, um, and I, I shouldn't have been asked this, is this the same vendor from last year?
This is the same.
And obviously we've been happy with their performance?
Happy with their performance, and as a matter, when we left this contract, we didn't get a whole lot of interest in it, so we found somebody that works and we'd like to continue to work with it.
That additional revenue is, is a big addition to, to the breaking analysis on the, on the arena. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about it? If not, I'll do it to them.
Do we have bad numbers on the alcohol sales?
We didn't, we're revenue, we didn't make a whole lot. We netted a little bit on the, um, on the concert.
Right.
That was kind of the biggest benefit we've had so far. I wanna say that we netted about eight hundred.
Yeah.
Eight hundred dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, part of the issue is in this contract, you know, for the producers that come in, is the arena controls the alcohol sales, right? And so some of the producers try and say, well, we, we think we should get some of that, and we say that's not the way we want it here in Young County Arenas.
Who's a producer, what do you mean by producer?
The folks that put on the show.
Oh. Oh, they want, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, that they want to, so we said that. So we haven't generated a lot of revenue that way, but they are starting to come around because in some of the events, if you don't have alcohol sales or producer, it can do this. But that's part of it. Overall, I think last year we netted like two thousand dollars, but we're working up towards it, we're starting to get them to come around, it's not a whole lot yet.
Tommy, do you have a question?
Who owns the alcohol industry?
The, uh, the, the variety of Lake Country Catering is, let me look at the signature phrase, um, Lane, like, Bill, Lane and Bill. Lane and Bill.
See local?
I'm making a motion.
Is he a sole proprietor, sole, owning solely?
Yeah.
Give it to Y.
Gets a little L O C.
It's a L O C, yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wiley's made a motion to re- renew contract, is there a second? We have a second from Commissioner Craig, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, item number ten, discuss and consider a phone system for the Omni Annex. Justice P. Joey Stewart is here to explain what this item is.
Brazis is here with me, Matt Walter. Think y'all have to pay for it to be, if not.
I think we put it in package.
So basically, we have a system that's twenty-five year old, and one of the parts went out, that's impossible. Three, four, and only.
It's pretty close, man.
That's what Matt approached me about, the, uh, newer, newer phone system.
Is this an internet phone system? Yes. Got it. I, I will just, my experience, we went to an internet phone system at the Alar Company, and it is terrible. It'll, it'll, we'll lose it, it'll, it'll drop calls, um, our internet will be working, but that system will go down. It'll, it'll, like, if you get any kind of, like, blip and, and a surge or anything, it'll, it'll knock calls off. I, I have hated it, and I know I've gotten several calls about people trying to put it in the courthouse, and I, I'm resisting.
Right, you're hard.
At some point, I'll, I'll resist it too, until they, until they make me, so I, I just, um, I don't know, I've had a bad experience.
We have an Omni Annex out there, an internet phone.
But we're not on Brazis out there, we can't get on, they would go out there, I don't think it'd have near the phone.
No, they're, they're that away, they're, they're snobby to the south side of the county.
Discriminating? I was getting picked on.
Brutal.
It wasn't your birthday, obviously.
If it rains, we ain't got phone service, we ain't got internet, we ain't got this.
I think a lot of that is your internet.
I think we're gonna go, we're gonna get that stuff done pretty soon.
I think it would happen.
We've got, we're in the new annex. We have that need property.
No.
We've got Brazis internet and Brazis phones, so.
So like, what, what's it gonna cost per month? I mean, this is the original setup, the.
So it's gonna go, uh, seven dollars?
Yeah, like eight, eight dollars, the installation is around two thousand, and then after that, the, the bill, because we provide also for documentation and they're on our internet, it'll be about, about eight dollars more a month.
Is this gonna affect everybody in the annex?
Yes.
Can you go one more block south and go ahead and fix that one?
That's hope, I know we could.
Yeah.
Add it to it. Quick, add it to it, we should put it. One of the things that we're gonna combine in that is there's two internet services that are currently there, and we just, uh, after we've got to looking at, one of them's being used, one of them's not, so we're going to disconnect one of those internet services and then cover the whole building with Wi-Fi at the same time. So I mean, I mean, have you, I mean, have you looked into what the difference between a landline and an internet phone system?
This is all.
I, I just, I just personally had a really bad experience. I might be able to help a little bit there, I, I did engineer the network, so it is, it is my baby, and that is, if it ever goes down, I take the very personal one. So that's the same thing as I told Commissioner Wiley over here, at the same time, if, if there's a problem with a voice phone, I mean, your internet's not up to par, which is exactly. Yeah, well, I mean, my, mine over there has fiber, so I mean, we have a pretty good internet. And the internet will be working, and then the phone systems will be handling. But I don't know, that's just my experience.
Omni Annex hasn't had any issues.
Any set any issues, but, you know, it's gonna be the same system that they put in the, the annex.
I would like to stay local, but.
Well, I totally would like to stay, I would always lean towards local, I mean, that best not, I'm, I'm really just talking about the difference between internet systems and landline systems in my experience. It's just never been the same since we've made the switch over there. But what do y'all think?
We'd have to figure out where the two thousand dollars for installation comes from, which is what you do in contingency, so that you don't have it.
So do y'all have no phone system right now?
No, it works, we can pay the four hundred dollars and fix the twenty-five year old system, and, but it's.
So what's, what's broken on it? There's a car, it's a, it's an ESI phone system, and this, the car that Northville, it's in Northville, sorry, he installed it, play that one back. So that, that car has gone bad, and we had one set on the shelf, so we've put one in place to keep everything up and running in Delaware. But if, but if you wouldn't have done that, there would be no phone charge. We didn't charge the four hundred dollars because we didn't, there was a, there was a need there, so we wanted to figure out, that's what you wanted to do moving forward. Does, where, do we have a maintenance budget over there that would have enough money for this?
We do, I'm not sure that there's that much in there, um, but we would pay it out the Omni Annex, since it's for all of that, and I could move money out of contingency, I guess, one, two, three, one and none.
Real thoughts, guys?
The phone system that I would work with in the gray, is that?
Well, yeah.
Progration's moved to the old PD, so if we go with this system, it'd be pretty simple to move their, their phones over to that building versus if we stay with this old system, there may be, have to be new wires or to, in order to keep their new phone number out on the hall that works, you might.
Well, if they're leaving our building, they're on their own for the phone, like, they know that.
Whereas the old PD is the same building, gets attached.
Oh, they're going to the old PD, I thought you, I thought you were saying they're moving to new PD.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I'm making a motion, then we go, then go with this, and we get any of the money we have for lacking in out of the contingency, I'll say it down there.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, and a second from Commissioner Shutt, is there any discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will pass five zero.
Okay.
Well, let's just keep the bad news rolling, item number eleven, discuss and consider a proposed maintenance agreement for the boiler and chiller, Ms. Roberts?
So, uh, you know, we always have a lot of trouble beginning of the summer, get the chiller working, begin of the winter. Dana Lane has given this proposal to do this work ahead of time, they think it should maybe stop some of the issues. Seven thousand four oh seven.
A year? So if you remember last Commissioners Court meeting, we were looking at how we're doing, you know, we kind of looked at all the light items, or how we're doing versus the budget and actual, and the boiler and chiller, we've had massive problems this year. I mean, just every time we think we gotta fix, something new happens, and.
What do you think this would, this would help sometimes?
I think the, the only part about the border side of it that would help is if we do the cleaning of it.
Yeah, I feel like some of the problems are they come and they do some work, and then, then they, they do something and it causes another problem later, and so.
Has the county attorney looked at this contract? We, we have not had any legal looking, the contract is, or, or just a maintenance, it's twelve pages. Written, well-written, but obviously written by their attorneys.
Come here then.
Uh, they very slant in, in their direction. What we're paying for, if I'm reading it right, is, uh, an inspection twice a year, basically.
And then locked in to using them.
And we are locked to using them, any repairs, uh, we cannot use them, and, and we're locked at their published rates at the time. They're not even getting a discount, we're allowing them to be the only person that we can use.
I tell you what we ought to do is we ought to go out for visits.
I agree.
And see what we're looking at, we may get a chance to.
But I hate, Riz, I hate to lock into one company, because they've been very good about, you know, coming out pretty quick, but if they hadn't, we also have the local, and they helped us with some. So if we're not locked into one company, then we could kind of use both, you know, I don't know about the.
Well, it's a, we can't just sign that, in my opinion, we shouldn't sign that anyway, the contract, this locks us into, uh.
Well, there's, there's always supposed to be a government contract, actually, you get out within thirty days.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as we're under this contract, we don't get out of it, we cannot use anyone else for working the system.
And that is be good, because we, you know, say they could be, they, they've been good about being able to be here for a couple of times, but it was a time to be able to do that.
I'm feeling a table, table on this?
The table is, and then there's that.
Okay. We don't need a table, we don't need a motion, unless we're just making a motion flat out rejected, we're blocked, but if we're just tabling it and doing nothing, we can just move on. Okay, discuss and consider man-made conscriptions change order on the auditor's office to include three exterior doors to the courthouse. Jimmy, you wanna take this, or you would like me to take it?
Okay, originally, uh, the sheriff said, we had a meeting of safety meetings, and one of the first things that we thought about starting with is the doors. And we started them in a situation where there's only one way in or one way out, and then the doors, the locked doors, didn't, couldn't come in unless you had a key, but you could all go out, in case of emergency.
It's one way in, but multiple ways out.
Right, yes, right, multiple ways out. But, uh, in order to do this, we can, we had man-made, go in here and give us a price on the three of the current guys that started working here, and it come out to be a little over sixteen thousand plus. And even one of these doors are different sizes, the guy comes measuring them, and none of them are the same.
Really?
None of them are the same.
That's funny.
It is, so they're gonna be special made, double panes, they'll have a push-block bar on them, he's also putting like a twelve-inch kick spot on the bottom of them around there for more, uh, support and stuff like that. But with, uh, doing it this way, doing a change order, we're gonna have money left over in contingency down here that will help pay for these doors.
Pay for that Alar.
Pay for that Alar.
Is the one door gonna be on the very front?
It's gonna be over here on the, on the west side, with the.
So if you're parked on this side, you walk all the way around. No, 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 it's gonna be, it's gonna be handicapped, handicapped. On this side, handicapped.
I don't worry.
Yeah, handicaps on this side.
What, what's gonna be?
Handicaps over here.
Yeah, yeah. What is gonna differentiate? Yeah, so what's gonna differentiate between this door as opposed to this door, what is it gonna have, a metal detector, or somebody watching it, or a camera, or, I mean, what's, what makes it different than any other place? That's the next step. So the first step is to, is to be able to control, control that, know who's coming into the courthouse. Now, all the doors will be exit, exitable. Right. But the next step, and then Sheriff Babcock says he's working on a grant application to get a metal detector, and he'll have, and I don't think it'll be every time, but when we have big, big court hearings and stuff like that, he'll have, he'll have a metal detector set up there, and everyone will kind of come through that. But that's on, that's gonna be on the sheriff's department to kind of figure that out, because they're in charge of the courthouse security.
Well, we've done that in the past, and had people, whenever they had cases, and in COVID, they were bringing them in that way, and like them checking, it's a real pain.
Why can't we just use that whenever there's a big case like there where it's needed, why do we have to have it done like that all the time?
You could.
He's one counter, it's just all the time, you have, they have a security counter there, so.
There's gonna be a lot of rocking about it.
Well, yeah, the, 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 keep our entry coming at doors for common, everybody else coming to public, coming in and out, so we can regulate the flow of in and out traffic coming out of there.
Probably not as common as usual.
It's not so much regulated.
Still, traffic is.
Employees would be, had a, had a, a different opportunity to be.
Employees will have a key.
Yeah.
Employees can really come in.
We will rehave, we'll have to re-mark our drive, parking, we move, or take handicap parking, go over there, move it over to this side.
Why?
We don't wanna handicap people parking there, you have to walk all the way around.
They have to do it already?
Yeah, but they have this door accessible also, because they can still come in and out, they, they, the ones that are, that can still walk from where they get around, like me.
Yeah, I think there's, um, there's a lot of training and issues with, with this new system, but, um, I understand the sheriff's point, there's not a lot of, it's, it's hard to secure the building right now, yeah, with, with multiple access points. Unless you have somebody there with a metal detector to see if somebody beeped through, you're not checking them, frisking them, seeing what's metal detecting anyway, they're just walking them through, what's the difference between them? Well, there's kind of no point, I don't think you want that, there's really no point in having, at that point, you could have all the doors, doors open.
Well, you pretty well do anyway, if you're gonna have people come in, they park over here, have to go around the building, they're gonna go out the door that, that closed, their car, once they open that door.
They can go out where they want to.
Right, but if somebody's waiting out there, they can come in that door when they open, so it's not, it's not gonna solve the problem.
People can cheat, yeah, I mean, that's totally true.
So security, it would let somebody have, we're not watching that door no more, it's locked.
I think.
It would make it a more of a point that, uh, if you're gonna come in and do something bad, you can come in one of the doors that ain't, that's already locked.
There, there is gonna be some issue of figuring out how you, the door, what the, what, what the right way.
And we have experience with the security of doing it for the schools for years now, so it's not gonna be any different telling people at the schools versus the courthouse, it's the same thing. Same thing, but if people get used to it, then it works fine.
It's a good point, because all the schools have one that way in and out now, it used to have a million ways in, now it's.
And the courthouse is an area of law to walk around, and it's like a school campus, it's, it works just fine.
Is there some kind of a badge or something you tap or get in, or you gotta pull your keys out, have your key with you? No, that's, that's a new system, we don't have that yet, so this door doesn't come with that, but, but that's something that can be, uh, you know, like at the annex, there's a fob, and if you have a fob, you just hit the fob and the door opens up for you.
What do we do with posted notices when all of this is, uh, people can't get in to actually look at the bolt and work this?
Well, at least they'll get in, they just have to get in one door. But it, it doesn't deny an access to the, it just changes how you come into it.
Like such a steps we have to take for future planning.
Yeah.
He just wants to.
Jimmy, are those, are those doors capable of being altered to accept a swipe key or locking? In looking at, at the annex over there, your number is considerably less than what I was getting for a hardened door with, with the ability to add crash bars and, um, card key access. The, the reason is, the lightweight doors that they typically, if you're gonna have magnetic or any other, like a Kennetlock, those aluminum doors will get racked after time and they, they don't last.
Well, these aren't, these aren't lightweight doors, these are behaves.
Okay, so long as they can accept that type of a last, that, and if so, I want that guy's name, because that's a lot less than what we found over there.
And it may be a cheaper bid, because they're already here working too.
That too. That too, yeah. But just so you can get the, you can add the, the other, what they're talking, what the other security activity later.
Yeah, it's not, it won't be that much expense to add that to it.
Now, one of, just somewhat related to this, Cheryl ran our ARPA numbers. Now granted, there's still some, some auditor's office fees or costs that are gonna come out of this, but we had three hundred and ten thousand dollars left when we looked at the last time. That's not counting the others either. It does not count the others, it's just counting like. What do you think?
I'm okay with doing it and using it to profile times and we, if we utilize it, but I just don't feel comfortable doing it all the time.
Well, I mean, like, for example, if you have, oh, Judge Gregory's here, this is actually perfect timing. Oh, like we're having a big criminal district court document, that might be a good day, cause then you can have, you have a bailiff upstairs. And then we can have a sheriff deputy posted downstairs, you can kind of see who's coming in and out and, you know, it's a good, a good time to check it. You know, currently, we just don't, we don't do that, cause you cannot, and I don't think for fire code reasons, we could lock all the doors. Uh, so it is gonna improve the courthouse security, it is gonna be, I'm sure, three of a hundred percent.
If you can get out a door, I don't wanna get to proof of nothing, nothing's, but you have to come in originally. If you can open a door from the inside to look, and go out of it in any direction, you open that door, then you're good.
But that's, that's.
Every, every school.
We're gonna see who's doing what all the time.
Got plenty cameras?
What?
Got cameras?
Cameras not open.
I love it.
And it comes down to training too, your staffing and employees here at the courthouse, if they're walking out a door seeing somebody coming in after them, they don't say anything, then that's an issue with that staff. And then it comes down to training and experience, when we get used to doing this stuff, it's just like the schools, the teachers and all that, they get used to that. And if they see someone waiting outside the door when they go to exit, someone trying to come in where they're not supposed to come in, the bomb is, that's a security breach and needs to be addressed, so.
May I say something?
People think it don't happen in small town, but it will happen.
Judge Gregory?
I was uh, my, I've been to a lot of courthouses in my career, all over, some places I don't ever wanna go back to. But with it being said, Parker County is their old courthouse in the downtown square, they have one entrance. All others are closed off to the public, however, they have a panic bar with an alarm on it, so if you hit that and go out, uh, without a pass key, it'll go off. So it's kind of one of those scenarios, you get some kind of a warning that that door particularly is open, uh, for nefarious purposes.
Now, we're not going that far because that's, that's a, that's more of a system than what we got prior.
Well, everything you do here is an improvement, as far as security goes, cause there's, let's face it, there's none, so.
The objective here is for courthouse safety and security, we're looking to protect the employees here and the people within it, is what we're trying to focus on doing. But the last thing, we have to take steps to get there, it's gonna take time and a lot of money, but we do what we can when we can.
And we do, you know, for those of us that are here, um, I think there, there are decent amount of situations that have happened here in the courthouse. It's um, surprising, but the, but we have, we have upset people here and people's tempers, you know, so it is kind of nice to have some people.
I'm not against it, I just, I like that then, uh, like he said, a door that, if we're gonna have it, have it where we know it's open, no matter what.
Well, yeah, and that's, I think, there's steps you can take, this is the, this is the baby, the first step, and each step has more money involved.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Um, this is just the first step of getting it. Um, Jimmy, are you making a motion to, to do a change order on that?
Yes.
Uh, we're gonna use some of the money that we're gonna come in under budget on the auditor's office for it, is the reason for the change order. Is there a second to Jimmy's motion? I'll make the second to the motion. Is there any discussion on the item? If not, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, any opposed, motion passes five zero.
Tina, would you know that you're minutes, it's ARPA, it's, it's ARPA.
Let's move to item number thirteen, discuss and consider the lease agreement, adding two antennas to the mobile phone of Texas Tower One. Um, also, uh, Young County Commissioner's Office One and the Young County Sheriff's Office. So it is basically the, we've talked about this contract a couple of times, but now this is not just gonna be the sheriff's, uh, communication system on there. We're gonna also have the commissioner's communication system on there, and we're gonna have the San Ricardo Club, which is our Armageddon, Armageddon backup. You know, if everything else fails on there. And so those are the additions into the contract. Jimmy, how, how did the money change on that?
Uh, we figured it out, instead of having to pay the three percent increase every year, about doing this, we negotiated not to have to pay the three percent for the five years, all of them. Uh, so we're kind of good.
Now, part of that was on contingency of us adding generators.
Yes.
I um, we came in fourth out of nine on Homeland Security grant process for the generators, and normally that's good enough. But they're anticipating less money this year and one of the grants was a big, big ask and I, back of the envelope, I don't think we're gonna get funded on the generator grant. Now, good news is I was told there's a public utility commission grant for emergency generators coming out soon, so we're gonna get another opportunity to, I think we're watching everybody at the apple on this, but um. That, I, I don't think we're gonna get the grant, I wrote, or Jimmy and I wrote.
Did you see those, the state deal that isn't that, when they pulled out the diesel generators?
Yep.
Those are pretty, so a couple of them are pretty nice.
We also plan to do this now.
We may, I'm still, once we get, I'm waiting for my phone call to him, once we know when they're moving.
There's a possibility they can do it this week, that's something too, if it works out this week, we'll try to get it moved this week.
Yeah, look, you know, so we take prepared.
All right, when you have a date, will you let me know and then I'll call the Zito guys?
What, what this is also gonna do from the commissioner's side, is gonna add two hundred and forty-nine foot more to what we have right now. Which means, in this part of the world, if you're people here, you're part of the world, you're different too, like that. But it's gonna do the same thing with the sheriff's part, the sheriff's part's gonna add just two hundred more foot than what they have right now with elevation entirely.
Eric, get some dad?
Judge, I just want to mention in this, kind of all this started with us looking at what was happening out of the tower out on Sewer Plant Road and Zito Communications and all that, just wanna make sure that they don't get missed. In all this, we're vastly improving communications for our emergency response personnel, for our county and city support personnel. I mean, it's, it's a huge step forward for us to be able to do this, the city fully supports it and we appreciate yours and Commissioner Wilding's entire court's effort in doing this. It's fantastic, something.
We're gonna need that in a better spot, I agree a hundred percent. We're gonna have, we're gonna be able to reach further with our communication. Yeah, the, the nice thing about this, the, the diff, the real difference is we're, we're adding more stuff into this contract, contract agreement than the last time we looked at it. Do we have a motion to approve the new lease agreement, adding the two extra antennas? We have a motion from Commissioner Wilding, second from Commissioner Cresswell, sorry, I need you to do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider Tapadera Solar's application for tax abatement, acquiring a proposed solar farm in Young County. I know all of y'all gave me questions to ask, I, I interviewed two, um, law firms. And I took all the questions that y'all gave me and asked a bunch of questions, and if y'all are okay with me just reading some of the answers, I will. Okay, so question, have you seen counties grant, grant abatements for periods shorter than ten years or pilot payments that increase from year to year? And the answer, this is from Bob Bass, he said you can do almost anything you want with agreements, with, with agreements from the applicant. They have a fairly rigid amount of tax release that they want to accomplish, but we'll work with you in most cases within those limits. Another question, are there instances of counties refusing to grant a tax abatement or reinvestment zone for solar farms? He said yes. And then the follow-up question, have solar farms been constructed without tax abatements or reinvestment zones? And Bob Bass said there have been, but that usually depends on other factors that may or may not affect Young County. Okay, another question, have you encountered reinvestment zones or tax abatements that require specific donations to volunteer fire departments? He said yes, he normally asks for fifteen thousand dollars or so per year, per volunteer fire department that would respond, um, and have, uh, and have additional cost reimbursement. Um, asked a question about the fire risks associated with battery storage facilities, he said it's a concern but rarely happens. Is it possible to include a condition in the reinvestment zone or tax abatement that prohibits Tapadera Solar Farm from seeking abatements from the hospital district? He said no, actually each entity stands alone, so there's nothing that would prevent them from going to another entity. Uh, can we require a bond from the company to ensure proper cleanup in the event they become insolvent? And he said state law requires a bond to protect property owners, and he says the county actually assumes no responsibility for renovation. Can we require wildlife conservation, conservation projects as a condition for granting tax abatements or reinvestment zones? And he said he had seen wildlife conservation project, projects addressed, typically, he said typically that looks like fencing out game, but depending on the size of the project, you may wanna seek other approaches. And I asked him about best practices, and he just, he says that they have a kind of a running tab of those and, and they would share them with us. Follow-up questions, um, interesting, Bob told me that he is stepping back, he's kind of starting to retire. And that he's training a Susanna Padron to take over his, his reinvestment zone tax appraisal practice. He did say legislation has been proposed to take away the county's ability to grant tax evasions, tax abatements. And he, his opinion is that he thinks it's likely to pass. So he kind of, this session, um, he said he thinks it's likely to pass, he thinks this is the last kind of go-around for, for counties. The other attorney had a different opinion on it, but I'll, I'll go, I'll talk about him later. I asked him about property values, and he says that studies have shown that solar farms increase the property values in the county. Not because of the solar farm, but that it takes land out of use for traditional uses. And so, since there's less ag land, less hunting land, than the other properties, the value goes up because it takes, takes land out of inventory. Is the reason it increases the price. He said roughly only sixty percent of projects given a tax abatement actually make it to the finish line and get built. Forty percent of them, they get, they, you go through the process and, and for whatever reason, it never happens. Um, he said tradition, uh, they're just kind of the, the rule of thumb in the state is that, uh, counties used, used to give seventy percent abatements. But he says now, um, he's really seeing sixty to fifty percent abatements with fifty percent maybe being kind of where most people are kind of landing. Said the process takes sixteen to ninety days, um, he did note that our tax abatement policies have expired, they were supposed to have been renewed every two years. So if we decided to move forward, we're gonna, the first thing we're gonna have to do is fix our tax abatement policies, um, which will, which will possibly require, require them to reapply. Um, he said you can't do an abatement longer than ten years, he has seen people do five years. He estimated legal fees to be ten to twenty thousand dollars. He said you can set up escalators if they don't need the original build commitments, and if they must expend, you know, then, then you can set up a P, a, a fee schedule equal to half or a third of what they, what they should have paid. And then you can, you can require that they, he said he's seen people put up a hundred thousand dollar replenishable account to repair damage to state highways or county highways. So if they set up this account and they damaged, let's, cause they're not gonna affect county roads, there are no county roads, so let's say they damaged a state highway. That they, you could set up this account, that you could pull money out to, to, to fix what they did, and then they would be required to put the money back in in case they had another.
Issue.
Another issue. So that was, that was Bob Bass's comments. I got a lot of the same answers from Jake Letter, Letterly. And Jake Letterly is with Wetzel and Letterly and he's in Sweetwater. So, um, he kind of said two to three months, which was kind of what Bob Bass said. His, the schedule he estimated was also gonna be ten to twenty thousand dollars. He said that fifty percent abatement is the going rate now, whereas Bob kind of buckled between a little bit less than that, he, he said fifty percent was on there. And he wasn't as, he, he wasn't as confident that the legislation to, to take abatements is gonna pass as Bob was. He was aware of it, but, um, but I'd say most of his answers were the same. Um, he, he has Jake Letterly, his work with Stevens County, so I got a, the reason I called him for the second attorney was that, um, the Stevens County judge has, had said work, he liked working with him, said he had a successful experience with him. So those were kind of the, the questions that y'all had asked me that I, that I got the answers for. Another thing I'd like to hand out, you know, what type of dollars are we talking about?
Can you talk again about what you said, if they don't get an abatement, there's sixty percent chance they go forward?
No, they said with an abatement. He basically says, so, so let's say you go through the process and you get an abatement. He says, what that typically and statistically is, there's sixty percent chance they'll actually build a project. So forty percent is, go through the whole abatement project and then they never make it to the finish line.
Okay.
Okay, so what this spreadsheet is, I'm gonna walk you through it, it's kind of hard to read. And if, I got copies if people want to copy that, we can pass that. Um, over on the left is, so they're, they're talking about a two hundred and sixty-four billion, six hundred thousand dollar project, that's their estimate, estimated, estimate investment. And then below it, I have our tax rate. And assuming our tax rate stays flush, it doesn't change, year one, they would pay one point five million dollars in tax revenue to Young County. And year two, it's appreciated to be one point four million. And it would just bounce all the way down to just a little bit under four hundred thousand in year ten. So over a ten-year period, at full cost, it would generate about nine point seven million dollars to the county. So the other, to the right of it, I kind of threw out what does a seventy percent abatement look like? And that used to be kind of the standard, you abate them at seventy percent, you fix up, you come up with thirty percent in year one, and, um, oh no, that's a floating one, that's a floating. So that's, so basically I said if you have a thirty percent floating investment and you said, okay, we're gonna give them a seventy percent, so it's basically thirty percent of what the hundred percent number would be. Uh, so I kind of did a thirty percent abatement, forty, forty, or seventy percent abatement, sixty percent abatement, a fifty percent abatement, and forty percent abatement. And then below, fixed pilots is kind of what you see a lot of people do, and so that thirty percent, you take the year one payment and they're gonna, they'll pay you thirty percent of it. And so that, you know, a thirty percent fixed pilot actually comes out to be a forty-eight percent abatement overall. Because as you look, as you get down to the bottom, where actually, you'd actually, in year ten, you'd get more money than they would have actually paid you. So those are, those are just kind of things that I'm throwing out there. One thing, um, I thought was interesting, he did say that they had no plans to approach the hospital. One thing I thought was interesting, he did say that they had no plans to approach the hospital district. When I was, this weekend, I was looking through the hospital district, and I was shocked by this, Graham Hospital District. They have roughly the exact same tax base as we do. And we tax the, we have, the county as a whole in our taxing district, they just have about seventy-five percent. We're at one-point-four billion, they're at one-point-four billion. And the difference is, we offer so many, there's senior exemptions, I mean, there's, there's, there's just, the county offers things that the hospital district doesn't offer. But I, I was staggered to, to find that the hospital has the same taxing business as the county. But I was, it's big money for the, it would be big money for the hospital. Well, that would be really good. I don't know if that would, yeah, would they go for that? I don't know. I just threw a bunch of examples out there just to, just to see. And then, you know, the option, there, there, there is an option to say, we're not gonna do an abatement and to see if they'll build it or not. And I did throw that out to all the attorneys, like, you know, you know, will they build it without an abatement? And the answer I got, I'm just gonna paraphrase what they said, is they said, yes, there's a decent chance they build it anyway, but what, he goes, he goes, so guaranteed this isn't the only project that they're working with. And so, you know, at the end, when they get through the abatement process, they're gonna run the economics and they're gonna say, okay, area number one did this, so the economics is this, well, that's at the top of the list. And, you know, just would, just put where you are on their priority list. They're gonna run them. Hundred percent, hundred percent. So I know we're not really, we're not making a decision today on to give a tax abatement or not to give a tax abatement. The question is, do we move forward with putting together a document and then negotiating with them what that would look? Now, we have to have public hearings and all that stuff before we actually decide to do, do this. And then if the answer is, yeah, you want to move forward with it, then the question is, we gotta pick a, we gotta pick a firm. And there are other firms, I just, these were, I only interviewed two. I've talked enough. What are you, what are y'all thoughts?
I think one of the first things we ought to do is, we ought to go ahead and get one of the firms to rework our abatement form. That's run out in two years.
Well, yeah, we technically don't have an abatement policy. It's, it has expired.
And then when you do that, we ought to go ahead and figure out the reinvestment zone. Are we looking at it from today on that process? But yes, I think we need to pick a company and see which way we can work it out from there.
What do the rest of you guys think? What do y'all think?
Yeah, I agree. Priority number one.
Okay, so we're not really committing anything, but, but we're just moving the ball down the, down the. The, the other question is, historically, we've used Bob Bass and his firm. And we all know him, I mean, he is, we all know him. Now, he, the downside to him is he's retiring, right? So he's, he's stepping back, so even though we, we would be probably working with him sixty percent of the time on this, if this was ever to come down the pipe, it'll be somebody new the next time.
But I think with our history, he's always here in the right direction.
I, I tell you, he's easy to talk to, he turns phone calls, I, I, I'm, I just felt like I needed to talk to more than one person. But I, I, I'm very comfortable with him. I have not gotten in writing from Tapadara's that they're covering the costs, and I need to get that.
And I would even say this, if we can get in writing from Tapadara's, I'd go ahead and, we need to go ahead and hire Bob Bass and his company to go ahead and get all this sort of stuff written up for us, reinvestment zone, all this other stuff, and go from there. If we get it written.
Well, they haven't even finished the study, the ecological study yet.
Correct. I don't think we would want to make a decision one way or the other in granting an abatement till we actually got into that. I mean, I think that's, I think you want to see that. But that's, yeah, nothing's, I mean, we're not talking about granting, we're just talking about kind of exploring the process further.
But what we're doing with him, though, we gotta get done anyway.
Okay. Make sure I'm saying this right. Commissioner Wiley is making a motion to obtain this, to hire Bob Bass's firm to rewrite our abatement policies and to begin the process of exploring a reinvestment zone and a, and a tax abatement. On the condition that Tapadara's provides written confirmation that they will pay all the fees. Is that correct? Is there a second to that motion? Second from Commissioner Craig. Is there any discussion or concerns to bring up? All in favor? Be against?
Motion passes four, zero, one. I have to abstain. Again, I have a surface use agreement that I wrote on some minerals. And if this does get built, there, I mean, there, there would be some financial consideration to the highway company on that. So I need to knock that one out.
Judge, would you take comments?
Sure, yeah, please. This is a great time to ask.
I'm Arwood Johnson, and Mr. Poe Solar Farm is gonna be my next-door neighbor. I'm adamantly opposed to it. I have a question. A judge has recused himself from these, from the decision on this farm. But for the record, I'd like to ask this question. Do any of the four commissioners or county judges stand to benefit financially or non-financially in any way from the Tapadora Solar Farm proposed by Titus Industry? In addition, is there any financial benefit or non-financial benefit to you, your families, your friends, your relatives, business associations that would benefit from this solar farm? And if so, would you disclose the details of those relationships and benefits as to each one of them?
So, are you comfortable with my answer to that?
Yes, sir. I have nothing there.
I've never heard from anything personally from them, and I have no benefits whatsoever. I have none.
Okay, thank you very much. Are any of the Tapador's guys here?
I don't believe so.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mary Ann Montgomery, and my husband and I, we own land in Throckmorton in Young County. Family members and myself own land in very close proximity of this project. It also has a sightline to this project. The questions I have is actually for Titus Energy, but I'd like for you to pass these questions on to them, on the record, for the questions and the answers. The first question is, has the project received federal approval in funding?
Will, will you be able to provide these to me?
Yes, sir.
Later, so I have to write them down?
Yes, sir, that will be provided. So again, the question is, has the project received federal approval in funding? If so, are the funds received for the development stage? Or does it also include funds for the construction phase? My next question is, and the judge has already brought this forth, because you also had the question, does Titus plan to move forward with the project if the county does not reward any tax abatements? And a follow-up question, which you were in discussion, is that it was basically a ranking system. I would ask Titus, what projects are you currently working on in the current time period, and what projects do you have on the horizon that would potentially affect how you would grade a project that you would start construction on? My next question is to Titus, what are your immediate, intermediate, and long-term plans for total acres projected for this project or additional projects in the immediate area? We understand the solar company has twenty-two hundred acres currently under lease. However, we know the solar company has approached additional landowners in the area. My last question. How will landowners be compensated for devaluation of their land in close proximity or within the sightline of the project? And Judge, to your answer to your question to the attorneys who said that property is not devalued, I would please note, it is understood that if you add asset value to the county as a whole, yes, as a whole, the property values will increase. But if you are in close proximity to a project such as this or in a sightline, I don't think anybody in this room would agree, if you have prospective buyers looking at your property to purchase, that they want to buy property near a solar farm. So therefore, if you're considering selling your property, I would present that your buyer pool will greatly decrease and also decrease your chances of getting fair market value for your property. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can get a copy of those, if you want me to get the answers. They, they did address one of the questions last week. They talked about they were gonna do a pretty significant setback, you know.
Fourteen hundred acres instead of twenty-two hundred.
Yeah.
We, we're hearing, in addition to fourteen hundred acres, that they're approaching landowners. It sounds much larger than that. So I'd be interested in, I know they have current plans, but do they have something on the board? Have they talked within their company about what is phase two or potentially phase three? In, in our discussions with other people who, who live near or have property near solar farms, we're learning that a solar farm will come in with phase one, get up and operate, and then immediately start phase two or phase three, so they keep growing these solar farms to where they're quite large from there.
I think that would solely depend on the landowners and not the, the company. Without any land, they can't make it any bigger.
Yes, sir, I agree. However, if the company has the goal, they will approach the landowners. So I'm, I'm asking.
Is there another phase, is there?
Yes, sir, that, that's.
Okay, another ask. Could you email this to me so I have a ready?
Sure, please.
I'm, I'm lazy at home. Okay, so are there phases? Tommy?
Good morning. Guys, it's just a question, okay? I'm giving anything, but I want to ask the question. Have any four of you county commissioners, county judge, or any of you who hold, anyone you hold in funds over, including landowners, city or county employees, attorneys, agents, or representatives, have entered into a written or oral agreement or given a discussion with any landowner, solar company, their representatives, or anyone else requesting the solar project previously proposed for development on five thousand acres northeast of Graham, northeast Lake Edelman in Graham, being moved or relocated to, to West Young County, west of the Liceville, toward the northeast, Farm Market Road, nineteen-seventy-four?
You're talking about?
I'm asking if anybody's ever, why that, that product was on, was on the table. It was written in the paper. And sorry, it didn't went away, and this one came up. I'm asking how that, I don't know, same land or?
Same land, yeah. You know, the, the first one that was written in the paper, they never came to the county at all about that project.
If they are in the paper, they.
Yeah, they went to the school, they went to the, they went to the school district.
Remember, you were ready to ask you that question?
Right.
You said you knew that guy.
Yeah, they went to the paper that week. Right, they went to the school district and they got an abatement from the school district, but they never came to the county.
Jimmy?
No. You're talking about Stevens?
Jim, you're, Jim, your district, you're from Precinct.
It's in Stevens, Stevens Lake, part of it is, part of it is. But not these, what I've heard of, that's been dead.
Well, there, again, out in, on their PKD's country out there, that you signed the, probably signed the mineral project along.
I did a surface abatement on the one, kind of the, the Liceville South End one. They approached us for a, they approached us for a surface labor on the other one, and I don't remember if we did one or not, but.
There's one gentleman out there that, that's in this area, says there's an additional five thousand acres that's been under contract.
Around Lake Edelman?
No, in Liceville, well, in this way, two hundred.
I don't know.
I guess I put that up, but you know what, tell them that it's, that it's get permission to transmit into the power line completely. And while that contract fell out.
How did you, how did you know it did?
Just, I'm just, I'm here to talk with people. I know they rushed it because the, the state was taking away the school's ability to grant tax abatements, so they, they were rushing it through to get the school abatement. And, I don't know, I never heard anything after that.
But the same concerns hold true out there, do you remember that?
What concerns?
Those of them that pushed it to Liceville.
What's, what concerns?
The ones you just mentioned, that the right thing, because they're trying to get through the, the tax abatements. It caused the state, money, money to go over the state revenue school. Would the same concerns hold true out there?
I don't know. I, I, you know, I, I didn't hear about the possible legislation changing, you know, the ability to do abatements from them. I heard it from one of the, the two attorneys that I spoke to. So I, I have no idea.
And by the way, for the record, Mr. Bass is the one that told me that the hearing on the wind farm that it did not mitigate the value of the property of twenty, it offered, this was several years ago, you remember? Offered, and told the city the appraisal, the, the president, have received it. Last one again, last week from, we pulled last, haven't trained those eight, they don't have, God, because of the past common sense and logic.
Have you looked, have you looked on the appraisal, I mean, all, all appraisals are public record. Have you looked on the tax appraisal website to kind of see how they've changed?
I don't know about tax appraisal, I don't understand that. You, you've gone to all about that now, because you've been on it.
Yeah, we need to go on there. They have a website, and you can see in the last.
That didn't have anything to do with paramounting that you win.
Well, I mean, that's.
Nothing to do with paramounting that you, of course, you're lying. You guys, nothing to do with that.
That, that's just information that's.
You know that because you, you, the New York Islander came through, they knew that you're, you're west of Poppy Land.
They did?
They did. Same old issue, people get in track. Thank you.
Hey, Tom.
Tom Parker, only economic development. Let me, just a couple of points. I was just in Austin two weeks ago and asked a question specifically on legislation that would preclude counties from being able to do this. Currently, no one has any legislation that's been drafted to be presented this year. However, there was a case filed asking that counties not be able to do this. Hasn't been heard, hasn't been opened, it's just in place. At this time, there's nothing that keeps a county from doing it, though that could change. That's one. Two, on, on abatements and reinvestment zones. I think you should look longer at reinvestment zones and less at abatements. You could probably do less money over a longer period of time. And some of that money, by being in a reinvestment zone, improvements can be made for landowners to make, to give them comfort on what will happen with land values around it. Because there, there's, some of that money can be put back into reserve and into projects that can help offset some of the perceived decrease in value that could potentially happen. So there's, there's other ways of trying to work through this. And, and open communication is a great way to make this thing all work for everybody. It's land, and it's gonna be developed at some rate and at some period, but slow and. But, um, slow and steady tends to be a better way. But you are right, you should look at this, uh, in the next year or two of getting this done as opposed to waiting four or five years. Because the legislature's gonna change what's gonna happen on county level, period. This and other things as well. But there's no legislation, as of two weeks ago, that anyone is aware of that would keep you from being able to do this.
Yes, sir. The comment was made that this is just land. This is just land, but it's got homes on it.
Oh, yes, sir.
It's got my home and it's got several other homes that are right next to it. And it's gonna affect us.
But I, I, a hundred and fifty percent, I agree with you a hundred percent. It's, let them give you. There are ways that they can construct valuation so that it can keep your home and your ground, you have better.
That doesn't affect the sound that you're gonna get from that farm, from the inverters and all the other stuff. Plus the trash and the, and the construction of it. It's not gonna be the same living conditions that we have out there right now. It's gonna disrupt that part of the county. Not only me, but others.
You are correct. But it can be, some of it.
Because everybody that's leased the land right now are absentee owners.
You don't want that. That's why having a reinvestment zone, the county is, and you, anyone can be put into a board, onto that board to make sure that those improvements are done to satisfy the individuals that are impacted. That, there are mechanisms that are there so that it's not just four guys making the decision. When they do these zones, you create a board and it could be as many as thirty people on that board. I mean, to get everybody, everybody involved, well, not everybody. Within reason, you can, you can get, you can get folks so that you have a voice and that, that those things can't be brushed off. That's part of the reason why this, why this case was coming, was because people were abusing it. It's getting a lot more scrutiny. I think you're in a better place and you've got a good set of commissioners. I've got no dog in this, I live in the county. But you've got a good set of commissioners to help you set that up to, to help offset something, I believe. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good job. The President, Mr. Bass, have a conversation with this gentleman? Because Mr. Bass evidently has learned that in your sixty, your six years, that does mitigate the value of the joint property.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I have, can I make one?
Yes, you may.
Right now, we're focusing on the solar farms because it directly affects my family. But we're also impacted with the wind farm. You know, the proposal is that more of the wind turbines be created out in our area. They're getting closer. They want to build them closer to our home. They want to build them all the way to five seventy-eight, which is one mile from my home. So not only will I get the impact of the solar farm that extends to the right of my property. Then I'm also going to have the impact of the wind farms that are going to come from the north. And they're going to come from the west. Our little place, we only have a hundred and twenty-six acres. But it's our one hundred and twenty-six acres. We are going to be surrounded by the solar farm and we are also going to be surrounded by the wind turbines. Technology is coming in, I understand that, and energy is coming in. And I hate to say this, I really do hate to say this, but my hope and trust is in President Trump. Who has said, we've got to do something about this. And I'm asking you to please reconsider what this is going to do to the folks who live out there. We come into ground and we spend our money, we give our tax money to Young County. But we are being surrounded by this. The solar farms want to impact this, but those wind turbines are going to impact us as well. And I'm asking you to please consider the whole picture. Not just the solar farms that are going to build these fourteen hundred acres, but all of this. And I just ask you to think about that. Thank you.
Did we, um?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we did, we? John, can I let's say something?
Address it, just a little bit.
Sure.
Necessarily, from, from the landowner's perspective, but partially from the landowner's perspective. Wind farms and solar farms have been developing in Texas for thirty-five, forty years. They've been developing in the United States for more than that. And then across, across the pond, if you will, more than that. Uh, they're getting federal funding, they're getting state funding, they're getting tax abatements, things like that. They've been in development stages for so long, if they can't stand on their own without the abatement. We need to do something else. And I don't think that they're gonna ever collectively provide the energy that's necessary for the United States. For the state of Texas, for Young County for that matter. I don't think the court can do anything to prevent them from coming in. The landowners want to lease their land to them or sell their land to them or whatever, they can come on in. It's whether or not the court wants to give that abatement.
That's one of the things that y'all are putting on our shoulders. Texas is a free enterprise. If my next door neighbor wants to put a pig bin farm in there, there's nothing I can do about that. He wants to pile traction to the sky and I gotta look at it, there's nothing I can do about that.
Well, if you're giving them abatement, you're encouraging them to come on.
That's not a one hundred percent guarantee, though.
We can not give them an abatement, and they still come. And then you've got all of that money to tax. Did y'all agree with that?
We've got, I've been a part of three of the tax abatements for wind farms. And one or two prospective solar farms that fell apart. I'm thankful that, that they fell apart. But it takes up so much property collectively over the United States and the state of Texas. Collectively, it's taken so much land out of production that it's affecting your food price, your beef price, your vegetable price, your groceries. It's affecting the whole mechanism of our economic development. We're gonna have to look at some other source to produce the electricity that we're gonna need. So, you know, I, in, in my, in my mind, I'm probably to the stage where I probably wouldn't grant an abatement at all, knowing that we couldn't keep them out. If, if you didn't grant an abatement to look at the funding that you would make if they came on in. It would be, um, multiple times what you're talking about over ten years. Of an abating period, or five years, whatever it's supposed to. That's what I've got to say now.
One more comment. Just look at, look at the bigger picture. Twenty-five or thirty years ago, whatever it was, Europe went green. What's happened? The same country as Germany today. You hear them every day. What's she doing? They shut down their nuclear plants and they're green. Today, they're underwater, well, they're, and they're having to buy gas and oil from Russia. That's where this thing goes, guys. And that's where it's been. And that's, that's bottom-up, that's top-down information. And that's, that's where you get your best information, what, what somebody's done with it, the rural conditions, what's happening. You can't stop them, I understand that. You don't have to give them the bait. County needs money, county needs money. Does the county need money? Don't give it, don't give it to them.
If I can tag on to Mr. Willis and Mr. Donald's comment, something that county might consider. I think they have a redevelopment or committee or something like that. I see that the wind farms and the solar panels are kind of, their time is passing and what's now coming online is the micro nuclear reactors. Haskell County is online to have thirty come in. So that might be a research item for the county. Yes, we need, we need tax money to come into the county, but maybe it's not solar or maybe it's not wind. Maybe we look to the future and research that. Uh, since I know that is what's on, that's, that's what's on the horizon and something to look at.
Just out of curiosity, what would you feel about if a mini nuclear reactor was being put next to your property?
Well, I probably have the same opinion, but, but.
Because to me, that's scary.
No, but, no. Here's the footprint of the one in Haskell County, two hundred acres. That's the footprint of it. And it can generate considerable energy in comparison to what the wind turbines do today and what the solar panels do today. There's a huge difference between. I think it's worth some, some research to look at it.
One last, one last thing from me, how, it's not gonna leave. But if you, if you do the reinvestment zone, by doing that abatement, what that does, and, and that's a, and it's really not an abatement. It is, but that money goes into that fund and then that money can be used to address all of the issues that you're talking about, to try to help that. If you do nothing, he's right, if they can come in and do it, stack it up, make trash to be everywhere and there's no recourse. By creating the reinvestment zone, it allows them to have your input, their input, the manufacturer's input, and making sure that you can have the best possible outcome out of this. But saying, don't do anything, you lose all of your control at that point. And I was gonna bring up the point about the nuclear package plants. I've actually been to that, to Amelie and looked at all that. I'm trying to get to it, we brought here the Young County, if we can do it. At some point, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an energy source for desalination, take some of the brackish water. That we could be a study part. I'm not gonna get off on all of that. But there, there's a lot of things, you're right, there's a lot of things that are gonna be coming. If we don't get out and get in front of it and have some sort of control, they're gonna bring it to you. And so we, we need to be good stewards. I don't know how we do it, but by saying no, it doesn't get enough.
All right. We can move off of line number fourteen. Should we take a potty break? You want a power through?
A potty break.
Okay.
I'm out of coffee, so I'm good.
No, not abatement, no. She wants to stop any developments.
Oh, oh, that's a, that's a truck. No, this, what I'm talking about is turbines, taxing for everybody, messing with them.
Mineral homes. And they'll turn side leaks.
Look at how.
Sure made a good court.
Well, pleasure to meet you.
Really nice being here.
Well, I live seven miles, I live on the same line. And we draw a market, and we have a market, you know, just, there is one piece of harvest. It's not that high, which is not a question of ownership. It's part of the three sides. So we're getting, so we're getting.
I don't, I don't.
I got no dog.
Some kind of intrigue.
Right. John Stinner might have mentioned Brick City or something like that.
I would have, I'd put, I'd put a green tree, let's say. Because I'd rather spend it all. Cause I'd rather spend it all, so. And this house bill, this city bill, nineteen, that's anxious. Talk to those people somewhere, and I, and I, and I can't, you know.
Alright, let's start working our way back. Alright, let's start, let's start coming back to the table. Alright, everyone back, it is ten, or what time is it, eleven, eleven oh nine, and we are back, back in session, so, item number fifteen, discuss and consider acquiring our volunteer fire department suppression blankets for electric car fires. So, Stacy brought this up, and I think it's an interesting idea. Jared, you, you had talked about going and seeing if we could get those donated, was there any luck?
No.
No luck.
They, they, they take my card, and that's as, as far as.
Do you, how much does that cost?
The, the ones I'm looking at are about two thousand dollars a blanket.
Two thousand bucks a blanket, um, and so we have, we have the five stations in all, so that's six, right? Then we would need to, um.
Problem is though, my first one, Mr. Jared, there are one time.
They are one time use, correct.
Really?
Some of them claim that it's not be.
But you use it one time, they're good.
No, but, but let's say, let's say you don't have a fire in two, three years from now, are they still good?
They have a shelf life.
What about that?
Do you know anything about that, Jared?
Not sure, no.
What's the actual success rate of deploying those things?
I'm not sure.
I'd like to talk to someone that's used it before.
About to say, before we.
When everybody didn't get one deployed down there coming back from school.
I saw the irony, you said that people really didn't want one.
They want one?
If they didn't want to put in people.
So, I will say that we do, we, because we had such a, enjoy, I'm not, we had such a light fire field. We do have emergency management planning in our budget for some, and so, that was just an idea that Stacy was throwing out there. So, sounds like the, this, this is, this is how you do this, and think about it, but we might have some money as we get to end of year, that we could take out of the emergency management budget, that, that won't be spent that we could invest in equipment to our guys. Do they have one in the city car?
We don't, we don't have, haven't had all.
Not one in the county at all. They're not on electric cars.
No, you got. Brother, we may be able to build an insurance company if we deploy one on a fire to reimburse that.
Where do you find that at?
Yes, but I know we don't carry enough water on any of the trucks, probably combined to put out one single vehicle. We, if you're not, if you're not hooked up to the hydrant, we're not having the water to put out electric cars.
Yeah, you'd better all bring a dump truck with dirt and cover it up.
My concern is that if we're out of a vehicle fire, EV fire in the city limits, and, and then we take structures on fire because of it, with a blanket, maybe we can at least, you know, keep it from spreading some, if possible.
The highway damage from one is, spot, spot substantial, whenever you get a, one of the cars on fire, you can't put it out, even covering it, they still eat up the highway pretty bad.
Well, I approached State Farm about a month ago, maybe two months ago now, cause they bought one, uh, the State Farm in Burke Burnett did, for their fire department. So, I went to them first, and I was told that they are not necessarily, uh, corporations, kind of locally ran each one, so that was their decision to buy one. Uh, and I kind of dropped it from there, but then we all brought it back up, you know, approached the dealerships, uh, you know, hoping that they would wanna participate, but so far, I've heard nothing back.
So, you talk about road damage, you know, when they, for the land, where they did the shoot, the loving alley, it's still. You can still see where that fire was, and I don't think it did any damage to the road, but it is, it's still black without fireworks.
Imagine something just burning and burning and burning.
Yeah, what's the protocol that they have in place right now in, in the city if they had a, a electric fire burning on Elm Street?
Probably about it, essentially, yeah, I mean, we can, like I said, we don't have enough water, if we can get to a hydrant, then we can look for a hydrant and, and get some foam on it. But, uh, normally the county, correct me if I'm wrong, Shwali, the county's normally the one that has all the foam, I don't think the city has.
City don't have already any foam.
So, so we'd have to get a county fire department to come in and bring foam, and I don't know if we have enough foam in all five stations to.
And that's another thing, foam is very expensive.
So, I mean, cheaper route may be a blanket than.
Well, we're gonna have to buy an.
Well, approximately, the runoff from that, trying to put that out even with foam is.
We're buying the county, the city a brand new truck for the county route.
Yeah, a lot. You, you can take, okay, once you get it burned out, get it out, it's out. And if your metal that's come around, the thing about it anyways, we're dealing with batteries. And as soon as that thing, the air hits it again, it's re-advised. And it's, it's gonna continue until them batteries are either burned out.
I mean, if a fire starts here, it's gonna be a couple of days, thing, just, just burn it out, under that blanket.
Even, even the people that, the wrecker services, they won't carry them off, they refuse, cause they're aluminum, so they won't last long anyway.
I thought, if we got the money, I, I would entertain it, but I, I'd like to have more information, you know, said shelf life. Let's, let's table this, and we can talk about it in.
Nothing else, is that at the, at the end of the year, we need to, at least in my opinion, look at, yeah, I'd say all he doesn't want one, we still need to have one of them blanked in this county somewhere, whether it be the city fire department here in town or the county. We need somebody who has ability to do it without.
How do they, how do they cover a car with a blanket?
Essentially, I mean, obviously put a bucket here on, but there's, there's loops on each side of it, and you just walk up, walk up on the other side of the vehicle, and they just cover it.
So, you gotta pull and get up above your head to get it up?
You go backstage and pulls too, for the taller ones, it's course sold separately, won't come with it.
We can build.
And the hybrid, the hybrid cars have batteries too, so there's probably a lot more hybrid cars than what you think, and it's not just total electric cars, you know, catching on fire.
And, and I can probably have teaks come in and, and train the firemen on, you know, deploying it and, you know, all the steps, so.
Get the dosen, push it out, push it out.
I've seen people get.
Just in the middle of that.
Better just go out there and dig your hole, push it off, and you cover it up.
Alright, so we're gonna table that one. Item number sixteen, this is discuss, uh, this is the William P. Johnson Cemetery update. So, the preservation committee and I have been meeting, um, for quite a while, everything got put on hold because Texas Tech was coming out to do archaeological digs. We kind of thought they were done, and, um, the project that the preservation committee would like to move forward with is taking all that old fencing off, taking that back fence off and all the, the kind of the overgrowth, the, the junk trees and stuff that have kind of grown up, take all that out, and then refence it, and they want the fencing to look like the fence across the street at, at, uh, Oak Grove Cemetery, thank you, couldn't think of the name. So, that was the deal, went and got some bids on fencing, and Commissioner Cresswell was gracious enough to agree to go out and take the back fence off. Oh, and by the way, the, the land next to it, the city owns the land next to it, they've put a full cut in, cut out in there, and their, their idea is that their land will end up in a parking lot for the cemetery, so people don't have to park on the highways. So, um, Stacy and his crew started taking the back fence out and everything, and then I get a call from Texas Tech that they're coming back to do another dig. So, we stopped, we called a called timeout, they came, they did another dig back there, um, and so now we can resume back with the project. So, Commissioner Cresswell.
Should we remove the fences as we speak?
Commissioner Cresswell's gonna continue cleaning out the back, there's kind of steps to it, so we're gonna clean out the back, take all the fencing down, then we're gonna try to level the, the back of that lot going back, and we're gonna probably have to bring some dirt in for that. And then after that, then we're gonna refence it, and then I'm going to, through, um, community service, uh, we've got a lot of people with community service, or we can do with the, with the work crew from the jail, paint it, paint that, paint the fence white. But it should look, fingers crossed, identical to the fencing across the street, that's, that is the plan.
Did they bring the sign to you?
No, I know where the sign is.
I prefer we do too.
And, yeah, they walked off with it, but it's, um, but I know where it is. Any other questions for that day, but I just wanted to let everyone know that, that we're now, we're, we started moving forward, then we stopped, and now we're, we're moving forward again. They're not gonna add any more spaces, is what's in there now, right? It's completely closed off. We've closed that cemetery, so, um, the, the next project is gonna be, the, the preservation committee wants, uh, to write rules for the cemetery. So, that'll be another thing we'll start working on, um, but, but as far as the capital project this year, what they wanted was, um, was new fencing. They wanted to look, they wanted it to look nice, and I, we're gonna make it work nice. And they've got a whole list of ideas for capital projects moving forward, I, I don't know which one they're, they're gonna wanna tackle next year, but, but there's a lot of ideas. And, um, but it's, um, it's really, it's really been a fun process to work on, I, I've enjoyed it. Anything else on that, before we move on?
We're gonna have to stomp around and those stomps out of the fence lines and stuff, trying to get all the cleaned up, and it might get real nice whenever it comes in to fence it, so, and that add-on creek, so we're removing all the trees down that creek line, and.
As close down as you can safely get, I know there's.
We can take bulldozer down, I can get both sides. We're doing as good as we can.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Alright, we'll move off that one. We'll move to item number seventeen, discuss and consider executing the county child welfare service non-financial agreement for the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. I'm gonna get that in my package. So, this is something that we execute every few years. And so this is what creates the Young County Child Welfare Board, uh, this contract. Yeah, so this is, uh, this is, the, the purpose of the contract is the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services and the Commissioners Court of Young County agree to enter into this agreement to establish and maintain a child welfare board to administer a county-wide jointly financed, state-administered, and legally operated child welfare program to meet the needs of children in the county who are in need of protective services. This is a, um, basically the same contract that we agreed to a few years back, it's just every couple of years it has to get renewed and updated. This is why we have a child, a Young County Child Welfare Board that I, I serve on, as a, I don't get to vote on it, but I, but I do participate in it. And, um, I would make a motion that we sign this non-financial agreement, there's, there's no money involved with this. We have a second from Commissioner, I made a motion, Commissioner Cresswell made a second, all in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero, I'll get that executed. Alright, item number eighteen, discuss and consider an application permit to cross the county road to construct pipeline or utility from Brazos Telephone Co-op for, how do you pronounce it, Comel?
Comel.
Comel Road, Commissioner Craig?
Yes. I was approached by Brazos, uh, a week ago, uh, they lined up, basically what they're gonna do, I driven to the site, and looked at where their flags and all, I see no problem with it. So, I make a motion that we grant their.
We have a motion from Commissioner Craig, we have a second from Commissioner Wiley, there any discussion or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed, motion passes five zero. Item, this is a little bit out of order, but there's a reason for this, item number nineteen, discuss and consider burn restrictions. I put us, I declared a, um, disaster area last Monday, and put us in a burn ban. That was on, upon the unanimous recommendation of our volunteer fire department chiefs. We talked about it yesterday, and they are all still in agreement that although we've had a little bit of rain, and we're still in a danger area with, with the forecast and everything.
Very much so.
They would like us, the Commissioners Court, to put us in the burn ban. I will say, I've been very impressed with our volunteer fire department chiefs, they are willing to go out of burn bans. You know, you would think they would always want us in a burn ban to, you know, help, help them. They are very open to when conditions arise, to, you know, when, when we get some moisture to, and get people out burning, and, cause they see that it helps them later. So, I don't feel like they're talking their book per se, I feel like they're really honest when we're having these discussions. Um, but they are unanimously recommending that we put ourselves in a, in a burn ban, and Jared, you wanna add anything?
Yeah, so Texas State Enforce Services, predictive services put out this morning, the, the, the week-long forecast, uh, today is the only day that we're not in a, a high fire danger, so we have high to near critical through Thursday, with Friday being an actual critical fire danger day for, for most of the state of Texas, so I would highly recommend that we, we, we keep it in place as well.
And I'll remind you, I'm really saying this, you're gonna get out on the, what the Commissioners, and we can change it if you have a strong opinion on this, but the Commissioners Court has empowered me to take burn bans off, so that we don't have to wait for the next meeting, but if, if they're, if we can take it off, they've empowered me to be able to make that decision, and if you have a concern with that, we can address it and we'll vote on that. Um, Chief, do you have any thoughts on the burn ban?
No, I, I'm agreeing that we're gonna keep it in place, so what we got looking forward to this week?
Yeah, we, right now, uh, you know, West Texas, last week was under a, a critical threat, and we had like three fires, all of East Texas is on fire, I mean, we have over a hundred fires, we've lost over twenty-five homes, and we had a couple of deaths, and actually qualified for a federal, uh, emergency, that's called an S-MAG there, so I would rather not take part in, in that with them.
Yeah, we'd like to brag on Chief, he's taken over the emergency management coordinator role for about a year now, it's been close to a year, and he's doing a great job, I've really, really enjoyed working with him, and I really trust him, he's, he's been great to him.
Learned a lot.
Well, he's drinking from a fire hose. Okay, we, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, we have a second going to a burn ban, we have a second from Commissioner Craig, is there any concerns to talk about? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? We are five O.
I was not the one who opposed this.
Okay, four, okay, five O, you're, you're.